This will bring our July 17th council meeting to order. The first item of our agenda is a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item here is City Manager Went has requested to amend the agenda, including an action item for an ODLC hearing. May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to amend the agenda to include the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to amend the council agenda. Mr. McDonald, the role, please.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Follic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. As the council had an opportunity to review the council meeting minutes of June 19th and the study session council minutes, are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, they stand approved. We have several items under communications petitions and awards this evening. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are quite a few here, and I'm very excited to have some new faces in here, but first off, we're going to celebrate a not-so-old face, which is our newly-promoted Sergeant, Andy Weiner, and administer his oath of office. Mr. Weiner has been a police officer with the Van Dalia Division of Police since 2013. He's worked at Shelby County Sheriff's Office with the Village of Jackson Center. One of the things that I always find most interesting is that he has spent more than 60 days consecutively underwater. He was a Petty Officer Third Class in the U.S. Navy, and he also has driven a $2.1 billion submarine and is a diesel expert. And so that was on the USS Columbia, which I just think is pretty cool. He's got an associate's degree from Edison State and, of course, graduated from Jackson Center, but one of the things that I've always liked about him in the crime prevention officer role is that you'll hear about Officer Sergeant Weiner playing football at Castle Hills Pool and playing catch with kids. He will be shooting billiards at the senior center and is always ready to stop and be a smiling face for that. And so I'm really proud to work with this guy and really happy for his promotion. And so without further ado, I will go ahead and swear him in.
Thank you.
I enter, Wade, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Ohio, that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Van Dalia and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police sergeant within the Division of Police. Congratulations on your performance.
Going through this, we have a couple of other employees who I've asked to share a brief half-hour speech each. The first is Mr. Ethan Whitmer. Ethan, I saw you here. Can you stand up, please? This is Ethan. He lives on Crestwood Hills. He's a Butler High School graduate and also graduated from Miami Valley Career Technical Center in Diesel Technologies. He's a public, he's a parks maintenance technician who's just come on board. And also, for several years, I have been watching Ethan as he has worked part-time in our custodial services and then also a little bit out in the parks. I will tell you that this young man is very committed to making Van Dalia stay a top-tier suburb through top-tier city services. He's always got a good attitude and he's ready to work, and so there are a million other things that are very impressive about him, and I look forward to him having a very long career at the City of Van Dalia. So, Mr. Ethan Whitmer. Thank you very much. Please have a seat. Next up, I've got Mr. Joshua Berry, and I'll ask Josh to stand up. Mr. Berry is our new fitness coordinator. He recently was a recreation assistant at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. He's done some outdoor educator work. He is a graduate of Ohio State University in Education. Mr. Berry is also a U.S. Marine, and so he got out of the Marines in 2012. He was an E-5 Sergeant and a team leader and section supervisor, and I can just tell he's got a very humble and unassuming attitude, and he's going to do a lot in the park and rec department to help people live independently, to be a hundred, to adjust some of those. And so I'm really proud to have this guy come on board. You're going to do great work, I can tell. The next person that I have is a man who knows what he wants. His name is Mr. Drew Burkhart, and he can go ahead and stand up. Drew has come on board to us with the Parks Maintenance Technician position. I previously offered him a position in Public Works, and he told me no. And he held out for the park and rec job, and with his background, not only working in landscaping and being a very reliable employee at Conagra Brands up there in Troy, and working installing security systems, I know that he's going to do a really good job in this group, and he's already off to a very good start. And so Drew, I'm so happy to have you onboard, and congratulations. So I will turn it over at this point back to Vice Mayor Lewis, and this is, we have a proclamation in recognition of Intiva Products, who won Corporate Challenge.
Indeed, we do. If, we have some folks here from Intiva. Wonderful.
Are you standing there? I feel like I'm working. Wonderful. Now, here's the proclamation. I am Chief Chief here, which I'm going to kind of paraphrase and kind of dispense with some of the wear as is. Whereas, Intiva Products has been a valued member of the Van Dalia Business Committee since 2008. Intiva Products first participated in the Van Dalia Corporate Challenge in 2012, bringing a level of energy and enthusiasm to the event that has been greatly appreciated by all those competitors. And, in the 11 years of Intiva Products has competed in the Corporate Challenge, the team has won 44 individual events. Intiva Products has an unprecedented run of dominance in the Jigsaw Puzzle Challenge, proving that engineers are really good jigsaw puzzle solvers. Intiva Products has won five overall championships in the Van Dalia Corporate Challenge, including winning the 2023 event. Whereas, Intiva Products has endeared itself to all other competitors by displaying impressive recognition. We're about to have a very interesting presentation on Castle Hills Pool and how it's going courage, great character, and a high-level sportsmanship throughout the games. this summer. If you haven't been there, I would suggest that you visit, but if you're not into all the subsequent local government stuff we're going to do, it's probably now, it's a good Now, therefore, I, Dave Lewis, by the authority best food in the city of Van Dalia, hereby time to go. Thank you. Not that you have to, it's a public meeting. proclaim Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, as Intiva Products.
our presentation.
Good evening. I'm kind of glad they left before, because if they, I finished or they left in the middle, that'd have been fairly embarrassing, so. Here this evening to present about our mid-season update at Castle Hills Pool. We thought since some of the changes that were made back in February with your all approval to our membership structure and our daily admission and our admission policies, we thought it'd be a good idea to kind of give you an update here at the mid-season point. I do want to introduce Recreation Superintendent Jeff Crierl is in the audience and our pool manager from SwimSafe, Aaron Baker. They're very responsible for the positive positivity that we've had at Castle Hills Pool in this first half of the season, and we'll get into some of that here in a minute. So, just a quick refresher, you know, from back in February, Jeff Crierl presented to council in my absence about some of the objectives, goals and objectives for Castle Hills Pool for '23, and then your ordinance was, the ordinance was passed on March 20th. Our goals were for the new fee structure for Castle Hills Pool, which was the first increase since 2014. New fee structures combined resident and business categories into a residence taxpayer title, and then the fee structure increases that obviously fall in line with some of the council policy goals. The new admission policy implemented to provide members and residents-only access to the pool on Sundays, Mondays, and Wednesdays. And that has been a rather large success so far into the year. We've had numerous positive comments from patrons. There's been a lot of social media posts about the members and residents appreciating that time, and it's gone over very well, so. Just a quick recap of our cost recovery that was presented back in February that showed where our cost recovery was for each year from 2017 to 2022. This includes operating, building, maintenance costs, as well as capital costs. The '23 membership rate, the chart has the '22 rates on the left, and then on the right is what we went to in '23. As I mentioned in the previous slide, 2014 was the last adjustment made for membership fees, and then the combined resident and business categories into the, to the resident taxpayer. So, again, just as a reminder of what we passed back in February, March. Daily admissions, again, the first, this was the first adjustment to daily admissions since 2003, so it was definitely time to increase. They adjusted the free admission age from four and under to two and under, and we also then exclusive access to members and residents on the Sunday, Monday, and Wednesdays. General admission on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, with non-members being able to come in at 12:30, so the members and residents permitted to enter at 11:30 allows them to come in and get their seats and get established at the pool prior to opening it up to general admission. So, again, those things have all been very positive thus far. So to get into where we are so far this year, halfway through, attendance from May 27th through July 9th. As you can see, attendance, the number of member visits are down slightly, and again, a lot of this is weather-dependent. Pool weather dependency is a little different than golf weather. Golf weather, people can still play in a drizzle or after it's rain. The pool, if the weather's not great at noon, we're going to struggle even if we open later or remain open and the weather gets better later in the day. People make decisions on whether to attend the pool kind of early in their day, so weather has been a big factor so far this year. For example, the first 15 days, we had 3,816 visits compared to last year, and again, first 15 days, 3,591 visits. So we were up in the first 15 days on number of visits. The next 15 days, we were at 2,395. Last year was 7,721. So those second 15 days were, was very poor weather, and so the attendance obviously was affected by that. Memberships, this was as of Thursday, July 9th. You can see that the resident taxpayer membership category was up from last year, so we have seen an increase in memberships, and then the non-resident number was just slightly less. So total passes, we are up from last year going into this year, so. And I think some of that is a result of some of the changes that were made going into the season. And then when we move into the finance side of it, the revenues through June 30th, as you can see, our revenue totals are down overall, and that mostly has to do, when you look at membership passes, we are up. Daily admissions, we are down significantly from last year through June 30th, and then the rentals and swim team were right about the same, up a little bit through June 30th. So, so again, a decrease, but again, a lot of it has to do with the weather. And, you know, I think some probably has to do with the $9 daily admission as well, but we're hopeful that that's pushing people more towards memberships.
One of the other things that I just want council to be aware of, as we look at our daily admissions, we collect those every day, and so we'll have those throughout the year, right? The days that we're open in August. We've realized a greater amount of membership passes, which we sell in preseason and we sell early on. And so one of the things I want you to be aware of before we go through and into our budgeting season is that we'll anticipate a decrease in cost recovery, because this revenue will flatten out very quickly if it hasn't already. And this, and this number, daily admissions, is likely to be less than the 2022 figure, whereas that's going to continue throughout the rest of July. And so just understanding that's an implication of, that's one of the results of the admissions policies that we've put into place.
Yes. And then on the expense side, our SwimSafe Services '23 is at $64,963 compared to $48,827. Two different, two things there. Our contract for this year is higher with SwimSafe. Last year it was $118,000. This year it's $145, or I'm sorry, $144,120. There was a pretty significant increase due to chemical prices were, went up quite a bit, and then we also asked them to pay the lifeguards at a higher rate than what they had been paying them at as a way to obtain and keep those people with us. So, in some, the other thing is, is it could be when the, when they were paid, when we got their invoice for the month and when that went in, that would make a little bit of a difference, too. Supplies so far through June 30th were down a little bit, and then miscellaneous expenses were up just a little bit. So you can see our expenses are up quite a bit from last year through the end of June. And then on cost recovery, when you look at through June 30th from last year, we were at 99%. This year it's 73.81. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but weather has definitely affected the daily admission part of, of the pool. We did, this year, we offered discounted memberships once we got to the half, the half-season, so we've sold seven since July 10th, four individual and three family for a $585 revenue, and that could be a few more, but that was as of Friday when I received the information, so. And then to mention the weather, just to give you an example, in June of '23, we've been closed for four full days compared to zero in '22, and then days under 80 degrees, '23, we've had 15 compared to seven in '22. Jeff and the staff do a really good job of documenting the weather each day and the attendance, so we can get a real correlation on the weather. And to give you an example, then, at the bottom, the first three days of July, we had scattered showers, low 80s, and 176 total in attendance on the first three days combined. Then on July 4th, it was mostly sunny, 90 degrees, and we had 327 people on just that day. So I think, Jeff, we grabbed some numbers from this past weekend, because we had a similar weekend. Saturday was not a good day. Sunday was a better day, so. So the positive so far, the biggest positive has been Aaron Baker. This guy has made a huge difference at Castle Hills Pool. His attitude, his leadership of the lifeguards, his, the way he communicates with the patrons, you know, you know, in the previous years, we had some very young kids being the pool managers through SwimSafe, and they did an admirable job, but they were given a pretty big task, and so they didn't always handle the situations. Now, those people are still back as assistant managers, and Aaron's provided the leadership to them that has helped them step up. So, things are going very well. Rudy Wells told me the other day that his wife and a friend of hers, Chris Zink, have been going to the pool, and they made the comment to him that it's like going to Castle a few years ago. So they're very happy, and so that's the kind of thing we're hearing. So I can't give enough credit to Aaron for coming in and doing that. And to our department's credit and to Jeff's credit, we recruited him for SwimSafe, because we knew of him and we knew he'd be awesome at the job, so, and we knew that's what we needed down there. So that's, that's how we got Aaron to come onboard, was Jeff, Jeff twisted his arm a little bit. They knew each other, so. Some other positives, SwimSafe, the lifeguards, they've been interactive with the patrons and with the children, and it's, it's a, it's a much different atmosphere this year to the positive. I added one that's not on here. Kona Ice and the concessions has been very positive for us to, to have worked with them. They do an awesome job, so that's been a very big positive. And as I mentioned earlier, positive comments from patrons directly, as well as a lot of online comments. And then Jeff Crierl's done a fabulous job, too, of, of taking the bull by the horns with, with our situation at Castle Hills Pool and assuring that, you know, we're heading in the right direction. So with that, I mean, we, we have a lot of positives going on at Castle Hills Pool. I know financially, you know, our, our cost recovery is down a little bit right now, but I think if, if we continue to get some good weather coming up here in July, we'll see that, that number come back up a little bit, so. So our next steps, we're going to continue to monitor our attendance by ZIP codes to make sure where our daily admissions are coming from, and then we're going to continue to analyze our revenues, as City Manager Went mentioned about the plateau of membership sales. We're, we're pretty much there. We may sell a couple more of the half, half-season memberships, but, but memberships are pretty much done for the year, and we're going to continue to monitor the, the decrease in gate revenue. As I mentioned, going from up to a $9 daily admission has probably affected some of our, our number of visits, but we'll continue to keep an eye on that. We'll also continue with the impacts on the weather, the effect of it on the daily attendance, and then we're going to make sure we analyze cost recovery and our capital needs as we move into the future, so we have a good plan. And then finish with evaluate the modifications, if any, should be made, and an example would be a concerted effort to sell more upfront memberships to residents and non-residents. And Councilman Follic, you'll remember back many years ago, we offered an early discount. So, you know, early April, first couple of weeks, if you bought a membership, you had it, it was a less rate than the actual membership for the year. So we'll look at some of those things and see if that could spur early memberships as we head into next year. And I believe that's it. If we have any comments or questions.
Questions? I just had a couple of things. One is, from a council member's standpoint, I have not gotten one negative comment about the pool this summer, and I can't say that for the past couple of years. Everything I've received and I've read has been positive, so staff is to be commended for that. As far as the, the revenue, you know, I think what, what speaks to me the most is when you look at the attendance figures from May to early July, and when the member visits, even though overall attendance is down, when the member visits is a much higher percentage than they were in 2022, I think that's a success, because to me, I would much rather the facility be catering to our residents and our members, whether they're residents or non-residents, the ones that have invested a membership into the pool, and I would, I'm more than willing to offset their experience being positive and coming back year after year, and I think that membership number will grow. I think we've lost members over the years because of some of the problems we've had down there. So I think this, as a first year, I think that's a, a great accomplishment, and I think that number will increase, and yes, it's, you know, we, we are seeing a slight decrease in, in financial revenues, and the city manager mentioned, and I know from experience that the bulk of the pool revenue season is over. I mean, with everyone going back to school earlier and people taking vacations later in the summer right before school starts, the, the bulk of the swim season is over as far as high attendance days. So short of a, of a drought, or we get, they get the weather like Phoenix and that has had, we're probably not going to see great numbers out there, but I think overall, it's, it's been a success story for the year, and I commend staff for all their work and turning, turning that around down there.
And yeah, I'm very, very glad to get your report. I agree with everything Corey said. I think we understood that the revenue may go down, but the offset of the positive reactions at the pool is well worth that, so thank you all for that.
Thanks.
Good work. Thank you. Thank you. We have no public hearing this evening, and that will bring us to comments from interested citizens. If any member of the audience would like to speak, please state your name and add
address for the record and provide any comments you have.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Spurgeon. I live at 777 North Edge Drive, Vandalia. I just wanted to say what a nice time I had at the police open house recently. It was very enjoyable, very informative. The staff was so helpful in explaining things. And, you know, I look forward to the next one. It'll probably be next year sometime, maybe. And also, I know we had the shred day back in May, which, that was so well organized and so nice. I just wondered if you'd consider having another one in the fall, maybe?
You're talking to the right guy.
We can look into it.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be really helpful. That was such a help. And I actually, a friend of mine couldn't make it because she had to work that day. She lives in Vandalia, so I brought some of her stuff. But, yeah, it'd be nice to have another one. So, and I know it's a cost, but anyway, it was really nice. So.
I will tell you that Minster Bank has one. So, like them on your Facebook or whatever, but they, they have a regular one, an annual one also, that you just drive through. You don't have to be a member. You just drive through and leave a couple of boxes.
And where is this?
Down on, in the, in the township.
Oh, okay.
On Dixie.
And they typically do it on Saturday, too.
Yeah, and they do it on a Saturday also.
Okay. Is it, is it frequent, or is it just one, one time, two times, or?
Uh, I don't know.
I think they just do it once a year.
I think it's just once a year.
Once a year, okay.
But it was, it was different, it was a different time period than ours, because I can remember. I had to take stuff both. So.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Robert Husson, 126 Inverness, just behind us, just a little bit. I am not known for brown nosing, so I'm not, but I know what it's like to be in a position that is oftentimes thankless. I would like to bring to your attention, this has been an incredible year for Vandalia. I think, hopefully, you guys are not often on social media. It can be a sus pool of negative comments. And last week, I started a thank you for Vandalia, just to see what kind of feedback we would get. I think we got a lot of comments because of the nature of how the thread was going, that people normally would not speak into for reasons, right? But I want to bring to your attention just a few things that I have noticed. And I want to say thank you, because you probably don't hear it enough. I've seen considerably less semi-traffic. You guys said you were going to take care of it, and you did. It's awesome. Thank you. We've already talked about Castle Hills. A bunch of negative comments. I actually dropped off of social media for a little while just because I couldn't take it anymore. It was not good for my mental health. Part of the comments that were made from the post last week or the week before, Castle Hills was mentioned numerous times. I could not be more proud of Sergeant Andy Weiner taking, taking the position. As chaplain for the Vandalia Police Department, our, our first responders in Vandalia are exceptional. I have been in different communities, sometimes not in the role that I currently have now before I became a Christian. But you guys are awesome. The city, what the chief is doing here, what the sergeants are doing, and they have been so understaffed over the past seven months. And I don't think the public knows that. When they go out, numerous people commented at the interaction that the police has in the community and how thankful that they are. These, some of these individuals are working 12 to 14 hours a day. I don't know how often it has been since you've done that, but it can be exhausting on both personal and family, let alone when you're supposed to be a public face. And so, all of that to say, you guys are doing a tremendous job. Please keep it up. And when you are mentally tired of the negative comments, call me. I'll meet you over at the police station. I'll take you for a cup of coffee, and I will personally put on a cheerleader outfit and hurrah for you guys. Because.
I'll give you my number.
Hey, I look good in the dress. I shouldn't have said that. I apologize. But I do, I do, I just, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jeff, I, I saw your post on Facebook, and I thought, when I first read it, this might get interesting. And I was very thankful and appreciative of all of the positive comments that received on your post. And it was, let me tell you, it was refreshing. Thank you.
I almost hate to ask, but are there any other comments?
Hi. My name's Frances Carmack. I live at 567 Tionne to Drive North. And I don't know if this is the time or the place, but you can tell me. I live right behind the Super Eight Motel. And it's a real big concern for us now that they're going to reopen that. The trees are a terrible mess. They've been cut down. Now, we have absolutely no privacy whatsoever from, from them. I mean, we find all kinds of things in our backyard, hypodermic needles, all kinds of things that you wouldn't even believe. Now, I know that they're remodeling it, but my question to the board is, whose responsibility is it for those trees? Because they're hanging over my, they're dead and they're hanging over my property. But when they take the dead ones, then there's nothing. I mean, I can show you pictures, if you'd like to see them, of what I have to look at when I walk out my back door. I've lived here 30 years. And when we bought the house 30 years ago, it was a cross-country and motel. And it was a very nice place back there. And the trees were all big, and you couldn't even see the place from our house, because we are the house right directly behind them. And now, they've just let it go and tell, it's just a hot mess back there. And I just want to know about the trees. Is it their responsibility to put them up? Back up? Back up, because they let them die.
That is in, yeah, that is interesting. There's a, there's a lot to unpack with the Super Eight. And, and believe me, I was
Oh, I know.
Right at the forefront of getting it boarded up. But as we go through the process, maybe I'll
I had hopes.
Let the law director talk our way through that.
Well, they're not open yet. Let's just say that. We're, we're still in the, in the court process, so there's.
Hope yet?
There's always hope for good things.
I don't wish anybody ill will. I really don't. I'm a Christian, and I don't, you know, wish them any ill will. But if it's going to be like it was before they made them remodel it.
Oh, it won't.
Sorry. Before they made them remodel it, I mean, they've already killed my property values by $50,000. And I've lived here 30 years and paid it off so that I could retire and not have a house payment. Now, this is what I have to deal with on a daily basis. You ought to hear the fire alarms going off every other day now. I mean, my goodness. So, you know, this is a concern for, for me and my neighbors.
Well, the, the trees, the condition of the trees is such that we have various property maintenance code type of things, but they don't necessarily have to have trees. I don't believe that's any part of, any of the requirements. So, potentially, they possibly could cut them down. I don't know. I'll need to look a little bit more on that to see if there's any screening requirements, because sometimes there are screening requirements between commercial and residential. I just don't know if that was the case with this one or not, but I'll definitely look into it.
Okay. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir.
Sir.
Could Ms. Carmack give her information to Ms. Holloway, and staff would follow up with her?
Seeing none, we'll close the public comments, and that brings us to the city manager's report. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are a couple of information items that I would like to share with you. First is the summer schedule, as it says up there. The next meeting is scheduled to be August 21st at 7:00 PM. Right now, the study session is tentatively scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. It, of course, is airshow week, and so thank you very much to the Police Division, Fire Division, Park and Rec, our Public Works, our City Managers Office, staff. Everybody is all hands on deck, and finance will be there on Saturday and Sunday as well. And so, there's a lot of work that goes on for our portion of the airshow. We're looking forward to the parade. The streets, of course, will close around 5:00 PM. Maple Bohannon will close around 5:00 PM. The parade pushes off, I believe, at 6:55. And so, I would just ask if you are participating in the parade to be in place around 6:30. An exciting report that I have for you, last week, we discussed, we discussed a meeting with Place Dynamics, and, and I shared that with you. Next week, we'll be holding stakeholder interviews with our consultant, who will be meeting with not only you as elected officials, but also developers and business people from the National Road Dixie Corridor to get their feedback. I shared with you an electronic version of the My Vandalia magazine. That's looking really good. That will be hitting mailboxes July 28th, thereabouts. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending an electric aggregation open house. Councilmember Follic was also there. There's one going on right now, so too late for that one. But there is one more, July 18th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and that's over in Centerville at the Sinclair Campus. And so, there was a lot of good information that was shared with that coming, of course. The effective date of the contract, it's anticipated to be September 1st, and it'll be 6.75 cents per kilowatt hour versus the 10.8 cents that was, that's the rate provided by AES. Finally, we will have two, two small things. We'll have our employee appreciation event at Halke Park on Thursday. We'll have a pizza party for them. It's 11:30 to 1:00 PM. And also, just a brief update, we're getting close on our $9 million roof and HVAC project to moving towards punch lists. I gave you a sample, but there's about 272 pages that Chris Mastrino and Rudy Wells have put together with LJB and ESG. And this is for a long-term facility plans to understand our total cost of ownership, which was a goal for City Council and our capital planning. And that'll include Castle Hills Clubhouse, Fire Stations 1 and 2, Justice Center Municipal Building, Parks Maintenance Facility, Vandalia Rec Center, the Senior Center. And so, that's really been a heck of a project, and we look forward to wrapping it up. And I think nobody more than Chief Althouse as the Justice Center is, you know, it is one of those things that we continue to be a work in progress. There are some action items that are on the agenda, if I can go ahead into those.
Go ahead.
There are two appointments that I would request that you make. We have two applications. The first is Board of Zoning Appeals. That's Ms. Ashley Franklin, who I'll ask to stand up. And Ms. Franklin is a, I have a resume up here, is an architectural designer in Dayton. She lives on Ronald Street, is a graduate of the University of Cincinnati with her master's in architecture. And of course, I appreciate that she went to Bowling Green State University for a bachelor's degree. It's a fine education, and I'm not biased at all. The, you know, I think one of these things that make her uniquely qualified is just her professional training to be able to interpret code and requirements. And so, I would respectfully request that you consider her appointment and possible swear-in for Board of Zoning Appeals member.
Very well. May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Ashley Franklin for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Sergeant.
Second, I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilman Ayers for the appointment of Ashley Franklin to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, we call the roll.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next, you could have a seat, and congratulations, Ashley. Thank you. The next person that we have is Mr. Lucius Plant. Mr. Plant lives on Cheviot Hills, and he is recently retired from the Dayton Development Coalition, where he's an expert in workforce development. He previously had retired from Montgomery County as well. And so, I, I think it comes out, there are many volunteer roles that he has held in the community with regard to the Dayton Metro Library, the Miami Valley Urban League Advisory Committee for Strategic Planning. And, and one of the things that he said is that, in his application, is that he's in support of reasonable and responsible development. And I think that's something important to consider in the Planning Commission. And I'm not sure, Ashley, I'm sorry, I don't want to shortchange you, but normally, I would ask for, you know, is there anything that you'd like to share? And I, I messed that up last time because I don't do this often. So, Mr. Plant, is there anything that you would share?
No. It'd be an honor if I am commissioned approved. I've worked in the region a lot and seen the development around, so hopefully, that experience of working with these companies and looking at developments will be, will support my.
Thank you very much. And, and with that, I just request a nomination and possible oath of office as well.
Very well. Council, may I have a motion for Lucius Plant to be appointed to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to appoint Lucius Plant to the Planning Commission. Mr. McDonald, may I have the roll?
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero.
I don't know why I thought that. I thought he had to administer the oath, but I messed that up.
I just, real quick, if I can, just want to thank both Ms. Franklin and Mr. Plant for volunteering to serve on these two commissions. These are probably the two commissions that take the most amount of time for our citizen volunteers. So, knowing that sometimes you can meet twice a month, and sometimes they're long meetings. So, thank you both for agreeing to step up and serve the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing that I have in this section of the meeting, I promise, is the Police Division has no objection for a new license, and a hearing is not recommended. So, we just request a motion to not hold a mere meeting for the, for the application that we received for sheets and their liquor license.
Ohio Department of Liquor Control, 3250 Benchwood Road. May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion not to request a hearing for 3250 Benchwood Road.
Sergeant.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilman Ayers not to request an ODLC hearing at 3250 Benchwood Road. Mr. McDonald, the roll, please.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. Oh, indeed, I do.
Do we?
I skipped an all-important procedure here, and that is the swearing-in of both of our new appointees. So, I'll do these one at a time, but kind of in conjunction. I apologize. Ashley, will you come down here first? Try to mumble a way through here. Swear your in. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ashley Franklin, solemnly swear.
I, Ashley Franklin, solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Ohio.
That I will obey the Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio. The United States of... And the state of Ohio.
Very well. That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Associated with the positions.
Associated with the positions.
I am undertaking.
I am undertaking.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
If you'd be so kind to sign.
This guy's getting swirled in before, do you? Oh, yeah. They always had to sign something. Yeah. Very much. Thank you, Sheriff.
And Mr. Plant?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, did I notice? Oh, heavens, no, no. Did you?
Right hand.
Yep.
I, Lucius Plant, solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Lucius Plant, solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties associated with the positions.
The duties associated with the position.
I am undertaking.
I am undertaking.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, back on track. We have no old business this evening, and that will bring us to resolutions. Resolution 23R47. Mr. McDonald, would you read this by title only, please?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of computers, laptops, tablets, and related equipment for the 2023 computer upgrade project from Dell Inc. at a total price of $18,188.73.
Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. IT manager Davey is recommending the upgrade of a portion of the city's computers, laptops, and tablets. Due to higher interest rates, Mr. Davey is recommending an outright purchase for this replacement cycle instead of three-year leases. As part of the 2023 budget, the city allocated $110,728 for the upgrade. IT manager Davey worked with Dell to obtain a competitive quote using the state of Ohio's Cooperative Purchasing Agreement under contract number Sierra Tango Sierra 033534109 for a total cost of $108,188.73. Mr. Davey and I are recommending that council waive the formal bidding requirement for the 2023 computer upgrade project and approve the purchase of necessary equipment using the state of Ohio's purchasing agreement. The equipment procured in 2019 will be repurposed and utilized in various locations within the city for an additional three to four years.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-47.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Forst to approve Resolution 23R47. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. Mr. McDonald, 23R48, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designated to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and authorizing additional action as needed for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Tion... Tiona?
Tyanda.
Yeah, that one. Drive, Mossview Drive and Ranchview Drive Water Main Replacement Project.
Mr. Wynn?
Your Honor, the Ohio Public Works Commission application for next year's funding cycle is due August 23rd. We will be submitting an application this year for the Tyanda, Mossview, Ranchview Drive Water Main Replacement Project that Mr. Cron highlighted in the study session today. This will replace all of the water mains, fire hydrants, service connections to all residents on these streets. We'll also mill and resurface the entire street. Once all of the water main work is completed, an approved resolution authorizing us to apply is required to be submitted with our application. The preliminary engineer's construction cost estimate for the project is $1,764,000. We'll be performing the survey, engineering, contract administration, and inspection for this project in-house, and those estimated in-kind costs of $36,000 are part of the overall cost of the local match for the project. Our total project cost in our application will be $1,800,000. We'll be asking for funding for 50% of the project totaling $900,000, with 25% being in the form of a grant and 25% in a 0% interest loan. And we have enclosed a map of the project location and the engineer's estimate.
Very well, thank you. May I have a motion on Resolution 23R48?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve 23-R-48 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Forst to approve Resolution 23R48. Mr. McDonald?
Sorry. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. That brings us to 23R49. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of three 2024 Ford SUV patrol vehicles from Bow Townson Ford for a cost of up to $55,000 each for a total purchase price not to exceed $165,000, and declaring the three 2024 Ford utility patrol vehicles as surplus property.
Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Our capital budget includes the purchase of three 2024 Ford SUV hybrid utility patrol vehicles to replace three aging 2024 Ford SUV patrol vehicles. Of course, these bad boys run a good portion of the day and have hard miles on them. Due to the demand for police patrol vehicles, we anticipate manufacturers having a very limited timeframe for ordering the 2024 model year. In the late summer, when the order opens, our patrol fleet is comprised of Ford SUV patrol vehicles, and most patrol equipment is transferable from the older model patrol vehicles to the newer model with limited time window for placing the orders. I'm requesting that City Council waive the competitive bidding and authorize VPD to order three 2024 Ford SUV hybrid utility patrol vehicles from Bow Townson Ford for a cost not to exceed $55,000 per unit with a total purchase price of $165,000. Bow Townson Ford is a city business that has repeatedly provided and been awarded bids for patrol vehicles for the Police Division for many years. Due to the estimated cost exceeding the budget amount, I'm authorized... I'm requesting that council authorize a future supplemental increase for the amount in excess of $153,450, the amount that was included in that budget. And so, I also would point out, I believe, that that is not included in this supplemental, but we anticipate that it'll be in a future supplemental.
So, if I understand that correctly, the supplemental is the difference between 153 and 165?
Yes.
Very well. Any other questions of council? May I have a motion? 23R49.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23R-49 as presented.
Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve the purchase of three new patrol utility vehicles. Mr. McDonald, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. This brings us to ordinances in the first reading. Mr. McDonald, 2316, by title only, please.
An ordinance to amend Part IV Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia by amending Chapter 434 by adding a new section 434.012 dealing with driving while texting as a primary offense.
Mr. Wynn?
Your Honor, Governor DeWine signed Senate Bill 288 into law on January 3rd, 2023, making distracted driving a primary offense and giving law enforcement more tools to combat distracted driving and saving lives by preventing crashes. Ohio adopted the new traffic law to address distracted driving under Ohio Revised Code 4511 dot zero... Excuse me, dot 204. I recommend that the city enact an ordinance that mirrors the Ohio Revised Code and our codified ordinances and traffic laws. The details of that are specified in the ordinance, and it is meant to reflect the Ohio Revised Code here locally, which is a matter of housekeeping mostly.
Very well. May I have a motion on Ordinance 2316?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-16 in its first reading.
Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forst and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution Ordinance 2316. Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Forst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. Mr. McDonald, Ordinance 2317, by title only, please.
An ordinance rezoning 72.628 acres of city-owned land located on Webster Street, south of Park Center Drive, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The city of Vandelia has requested a rezoning for city-owned property. This is the property that was donated to the city by Montgomery County for the purpose of developing a public safety training facility or other uses. The request involves seven parcels totaling 72.628 acres, plus or minus, located approximately 500 feet south of Park Center Drive on Webster Street within the city of Vandelia. The proposed... As proposed, the subject properties would be rezoned from agriculture, industrial, office industrial park, public facilities zoning districts to OIP, Office Industrial Park, on the west side of the street, and then Industrial Innovation on Lot 2, which is on the east side of the street. The reasoning for this proposal is that there is already a significant amount of office industrial park on this side of it. And in the future land use map, which was adopted by City Council as a policy document in the comprehensive plan, the 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, this area was called for a combination of office industrial park and public facilities. Of course, at that time, we didn't contemplate that that land would be donated to the city. We first discussed this at the retreat on May 12th. We had this at City Council as a discussion item on May 15th. I attended the... Just to make sure that the application was good, I went ahead and I attended the June 13th Planning Commission meeting where we had discussion about this. And there was a five to zero vote to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. We then brought that back to study session on June 19th. And today, it is before you for consideration for a first reading.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 2317?
I'd like to move to table Ordinance 23-17 in its first reading. Though I... We have had this up for discussion in various forms. This property butts up against the Redwood property, which is residential. And Industrial Innovation, to me, needs a buffer between the residential... If we're going to go to that zoning, it needs a buffer of some sort, which there would be none. There's no emergency with this. We have two members missing. We've not really had a council discussion. We've been informed of us taking possession of this property and using it in a certain direction or directions. But we don't have that planned, laid out, so there's absolutely no emergency to pass this right now with further discussion needing to solve that situation, so...
Very well.
I'll second that motion.
I have a... I have a motion to table by Councilwoman Forst and a second by Councilman Ayers. Are there any further comments by council?
I have a question for the city manager or law director. This was precipitated by, we have to rezone all of this. Correct to have the lots consolidated?
We would...
For us to take possession of it? Is that...
We would...
That was the driving force behind this, correct?
Yeah, we would require that of anybody else to do some sort of uniform rezoning of the lots in order to plat so that it can be recorded, which can be done at any time.
Okay. And then, the other thing I would say is, this... All this property is owned by the city of Vandelia. Correct, already, that we've already closed on?
Yes.
The titles, and, so I guess my, my only, I mean, I understand Councilwoman Farce's concern, but I think the, the purposes of the rezoning was to make this, that, whether it be the public work or the public safety training facility, and then there's some challenges, obviously, with that property down there anyway because of the terrain and everything else, there's, there's limited development possibilities down there, but that the I and I recommendation on the east side of Webster was to create the most flexibility for the city as far as the use of that, whether it be for internal, internal use in the future or, or if there was ever any outside development on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, thank you.
I, I spoke to Planning, Planning Member today, and there was no discussion with them about it butting up against a residential. Now, we just approved the extension on Redwood tonight. That senior housing is on that north edge of that piece of property, and there was no discussion with, with Planning in their meeting, so I don't think that was, I mean, that should have been brought up also, so.
Further comments?
Has there already been a request for RFQs on that safety training facility?
Last year, with the Division of Fire and the Division of Police, we conducted an RFQ. The initial prices for the design were quite high, and I think that in our discussions, we thought that it was appropriate to push that off and work on the public works facility before that at a different, at this parcel or at a different one, then we got the subsequent donation.
All right, thank you.
Any further? Mr. McDonald, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion to table passes five to zero. Mr. McDonald, Ordinance 23-18 by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Condition 5 of Ordinance 22-dash-27 to grant additional time for commencement of construction of the Redwood Van Dalia Development Subarea, A PUD. Sorry, Subarea A PUD.
Very well. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, PVL Investments LLC, has requested an extension of time on their planned unit development, final development plan. City code requires that construction commence within 12 months of approval. Citing current industry and market conditions, the applicant has requested a one-year extension.
Very well. May I have a motion on Ordinance 23-18?
I move that we approve Resil, uh, Ordinance 23-dash-18.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Follic to approve Ordinance 23-18. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. Brings us to 23-19, Mr. McDonald by title only.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 208 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Van Dalia.
Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Under the existing codified ordinance, purchases of $25,000 or more require formal bidding. The process can be costly as the steps include several hours of work required by management, by the Law Director, by council. In addition, discussions are included on the agendas and, and can, and our ability to meet. The proposed purch, if a proposed purchase is time-sensitive and subject to pricing limitations, there can be delays and then also higher pricing. The proposed purchases are included, if proposed purchases are included in the five-year capital improvement plan and discussed during the budget workshops and adopted by council. We've made several proposals in the interest of the city, which would be to raise that threshold from 25,000 to 50,000, and then conduct formal bids, of course, for anything that's over 50,000. There are several other components that are in here, and then we would request to be able to come to council for a discussion item for items that are over 25,000, but not in, not necessarily included in the capital improvement plan or the budget, but maybe something that's come up, or if there's been a significant modification of scope. There are a couple of other items that are included in your packet, one of which is in consideration of increasing the blanket line item amount to $100,000, and then also only requiring an affirmative vote of four council members instead of five to waive competitive bidding, as there could be times in the year when maybe we need, maybe we need votes but aren't able to, but aren't able to put that together. We discussed the majority of this at the retreat on May 12th, and we presented it on the June 19th study session, and so today it is before you for a first reading.
Thank you. May I have a motion on Ordinance 23-19?
I move that we table Ordinance 29, 23-19 on the certain, amending certain sections of Chapter 208, basically because there are some changes in this ordinance that we received on Friday. We have two members missing. We had quite a discussion at our workshop with, with some really uncertain direction, I feel, or attitudes, and so I think we need another discussion with all members present if we want to take this direction or not.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce, a second by Councilman Ayers to table Ordinance 23-19. Are there any further comments of council?
I, I have a question for clarification, and I apologize, I should have asked this during the study session, but there were two things that, in reviewing this, that I thought looked a little different than prior versions or that weren't discussed, weren't discussed. The one was the blanket purchase order increased to $100,000. I don't recall discussing that, so that, that might be an area that probably needs some more clarification. There may be a justification for it, but I just don't recall any of that discussion. And then, the 25,000 to 50,000, that's not in the approved budget or CIP. Am I thinking correctly that if, the way this is worded is, it would be brought to council similar to the items now that are under $25,000, and council would be advised of the purchase? However, am I not correct that in that event, those would still need to be passed, I mean, if that wasn't in the budget to begin with, that that's going to have to be passed in a supplemental ordinance more than likely?
For something that's that large, yes, I, I do believe that that's likely.
So I guess my, I mean, is there a checks and balances that if, if council, I mean, if council was given information at a workshop or whatever that this purchase was made, and there, the majority of council did not agree with it, I mean, my thought would be, council would make that clear to staff then, and they would probably not proceed with it, however?
Yeah, that'd be a good clear move.
But however, I mean, ultimately, the supplemental would have to be approved by council at some point to be able to make that purchase anyway.
Yeah. Any, any funds, any funds that are expended are appropriated by council, and so I, I don't say that for you, I say that for the audience mostly.
So I mean, that's the way I understood it, but I, I think it may need to be wordsmithed a little better.
Okay.
Just my, because when I first read that, it read a little different than the way I understood it, but I think that's how I understood it, but that was.
Right. And, and also keeping in mind that I've attached an administrative policy that goes through that and spells it out, I think in a way that's easier for an employee who comes in to understand the way that we would manage that, and I've got that up on the screen, but we, we can work to clarify that, and certainly, all feedback is welcome.
Very well. Anything further? Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion to table passes five to zero. We have no ordinances in the second reading, however, we do have an emergency ordinance, 23-15. Mr. McDonald, would you read that by title only, please?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Went?
Your Honor, the emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer and water, weed cutting.
Very well. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open the public hearing, hearing for Ordinance 23-15. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this legislation, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please give us your comment. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. May I have a motion on Ordinance 23-15?
Yes, I move we approve Ordinance 23-15 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Woods and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Ordinance 23-15 as an emergency. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. That brings us to a variance. I may have more than 15 pages. Next, we have a variance at 769 Center Drive Kendall Electric. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Troy DeLonge, on behalf of Kendall Electric, has requested a variance to allow two driveway entrances, entrance signs to exceed the maximum height and area requirement on the property located at 769 Center Drive. The applicant has proposed adding two driveway entrance signs, one per curb cut, that would exceed the height requirement by four inches and area requirement by five square feet. On June 28th, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted three to one to recommend approval with conditions, and I've got those conditions listed up here. The sign shall comply with the visibility clearance requirements per City Code Section 1226 dot 07. The sign shall be set back a minimum of two feet from the public right-of-way, but no more than 25 feet from the driveway entrance per City Code 1236 dot 11 Hotel 1. No, that's the next one.
Was there not a third one, the fence?
I think that's on the next one, isn't it?
Very well, just checking.
Unhonest.
May I have a motion on the variance at 769 Center Drive?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for 769 Center Drive with the two conditions of the BZA.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve variance 769 Center Drive with the two comments or recommendations. Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion to approve the variance is passed five to zero. Next, we have a variance for 811 Falls Creek Drive. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Wes Eichelmann, on behalf of Wyboll Energy Systems, has requested a variance to allow an assess, an accessory structure to exceed the maximum height requirement on the property located at 811 Falls Creek Drive. The applicant has proposed adding an accessory structure that would exceed the maximum height requirement by nine feet and four inches. On July 12th, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval with the following three conditions. The applicant shall comply with the landscaping and screening requirements per City Code 1232. The surface of any new vehicular use area shall be paved with a hard, durable, dust-free surface such as asphalt or concrete excluding compacted gravel per City Code Section 1234 dot 03 Foxtrot 1. And the third condition, the proposed six-foot chain link fence with privacy slats along the rear and side yard of the property shall be vinyl coated per City Code Section 1224 dot 01 Echo 9 Golf 2.
Very well. May I have a motion on variance at 811 Falls Creek Drive by Wyboll Energy Systems?
I move that we approve the variance on 811 Falls Creek Drive for Wyboll Energy Systems with the three
Conditions.
Conditions be met.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve the variance at 811 Falls Creek Drive with the three recommendations and conditions of the BZA. Mr. McDonald, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion is approved, five to zero. Next, we have the minutes of the Boards and Commissions, Van Dalia Arts Council Minutes, the Civil Service Minutes of May 25th, the Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes of April 26th, and the Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes of June 28th. Are there any comments by council? Seeing none, we move to the bill listing of June 20, 2023. We have a bill listing of $2,530,911.25. June expenses over $50,000, and June purchasing card detail in the amount of $20,192.52. Are there any comments, council? That brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Went?
Happy Airshow Week, that's it.
Very good. Councilwoman Woods?
Yes, I'd like to move to excuse the Mayor, Richard Herbst, and Councilman Michael Blakesley from all meetings this evening.
Very well, do we need a vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Councilman Follic?
Just to congratulate Sergeant Weiner on his promotion. I've interacted with Andy on several occasions, and he's an excellent choice for that job, so I'm looking forward to that, and welcome to all of our new employees. Real quick, the City Manager spoke about the electric aggregation, and I know it was included in his blue letter, but one thing that I think, you know, out of the, the meeting last week and, and everything that's been pushed out, and I know the city put something out today on social media, but those residents who are already under a third-party contract for a electric supplier for a electric supplier, so you're not on the AES standard rate and you've, you've opted for another electric supplier prior to now, those residents will not receive letters from Energy Harbor because they're not permitted to solicit people who are already under contract. So, any of those residents who are under another supplier need to contact Energy Harbor directly if they want to opt in to the electric aggregation contract. And it was just highly recommended by Energy Harbor that you just make sure and double-check through your current supplier that you would not have any early termination fees for doing so. There will never be any fees from Energy Harbor to enroll or, or to leave the program, but they caution people that some people may have signed up for something where there's a, a termination fee, so to make sure that they don't do that. So I think we spoke at the event, and that was probably one of the biggest issues that some people had that weren't getting letters, where they were already under contract, so they are not getting solicited by Energy Harbor because they're prohibited from doing so, so. And then the last thing, I, I was up on Foley over the weekend, and just that, that project looks great, the road looks amazing, and I, that was the first time I'd actually seen the Habitat for Humanity home that was built there on Foley, and it just blends into the neighborhood greatly, so I think that went all well, two great projects. That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Fairst?
Just congratulations to Officer Weiner, and it's really nice to have all the employees come and introduce to us. I mean, it's, it's a real pleasure, it's, it's great to get to know them a little bit, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilman Ayers?
Just hope to see everyone at the airshow, thank you.
I would like to thank Angela Schwartz, our Clerk of Council, for providing me copious notes to get through this meeting that a blind squirrel could have followed. Any errors or omissions I own, and they're not her fault. And with that, I would like to conclude the meeting. We're adjourned.